I now call ordered the regular session of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, September 16th at 6:34. Roll call?
Mayor Archie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Here.
Mr. Terrapanning?
Here.
Commissioner Manther?
Here.
Mr. Seber?
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Pastor Snare of St. Timothy Lutheran Church. Will everyone stand? Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance following.
Gracious Lord, we give you thanks for this day, for the rain, for this amazing city that we live in. We ask that you would provide prosperity and peace and protection to all those who live here, that we might be good stewards of all that you have given us. And we pray for your wisdom, counsel, and guidance for those leaders that you have called to serve you. We pray this in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will now go to public comments on any item that would not be discussed this evening. Seeing none, we'll go to presentations, Chamber of Commerce Beautification Award.
Reggie Gibson, President, Tarpon Springs Chamber. Our Ambassador Committee selects businesses within the city that have beautified the outside of their businesses, and we have two presentations tonight. The first one is for Londano Art Studio.
Okay, good evening, everybody. We just want to say thank you for this. This is really important for us. My husband and I, we worked really hard on this project for a long time, and we didn't know that our project would benefit the city somehow. So, we're really happy about all of this, and we are happy that we are doing something for the community and how the community is responding to us. So, we are here to stay, and we love Tarpon Springs. We're really all welcome here.
The second one goes to U.S. Ameribank.
On behalf of U.S. Ameribank and our team here in Tarpon Springs, we thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the City of Tarpon, we first want to thank the Chamber and Ms. Gibson for selecting both of you for this award. We definitely appreciate your efforts in making Tarpon a better city by just beautifying your establishment. You know, it helps to keep us number one, and we definitely appreciate all that you do, both of the businesses. We just say thank you. Our next item is Pinellas County Schools Office of Strategic Partnership. We have Ms. Jane Marino, Family and Community Relations Liaison from Tarpon Springs High School. It doesn't look like...
It doesn't look like Jane. Hey, good evening, Mayor and Commissioner DeMorrisley with Pinellas County Schools Office of Strategic Communications. We want to take the opportunity, first of all, not only to talk about mentoring, but we also want to have the opportunity to introduce Tarpon High's new principal and give him the opportunity to address the commission and say some kind words, Mr. James Joyer.
Good evening. I'd like to say hello and welcome to Tarpon Springs High School. I get to say that every day to our students, and if you have a child in the school, which I know a couple of you do, you'll always hear, they'll always hear me say the same thing. Can't hide our Sponger pride, and we're so proud, and I'm very happy to be here. Rest assured, I'm quite capable of the position. I've been in Pinellas County School System for 27 years and the capacity of an administrator for just about 22 of those years. Our goals, as I told the kids this morning, are three-pronged. One, to provide them with the environment that's conducive to learning, and that is multi-tiered, including a safe learning environment, but also one that embraces them with their teachers caring and having that feeling of affection that we are glad that they are here. As I told staff and students, we're here for them, not the other way around. So, we want to make sure we continue with that motto and that mantra. Second thing is that we challenge them academically. I told the parents on the very first night that I met them at orientation and at back-to-school night, "We're going to challenge your child." We have many challenge, many great academic and core programs. We're going to make sure that they are ready for the next level. As I told the kids today, you are not only competing in the City of Tarpon or Pinellas County or in the state of Florida, you are competing in the global economy. And so, we're going to make sure you're ready for that next level, no matter where that level takes you, whether it's directly into the workforce with one of our culinary certifications, our Vet Tech certification, whether it's being prepared for one of our students like last year who went to the Juilliard and our band programs, or whether it's one of our Cambridge kids going on to the next level, or it's one who's going to the local St. Pete College. It just depends on the student's decision on which direction they want to go. And finally, we always, always encourage them to get involved and be involved in the community itself, in the school. I tell them, you know, I remember, just like if I already, if you told your children tonight, you don't necessarily remember a specific class in high school, but you sure remember being on the team, the club, the organization. And that's what I tell them. 10, 20, 30 years from now, you're going to remember those activities at the school, and that's what's going to embrace your love of the school when you go ahead and think fondly of it in years to come. So, I just wanted to give you an overview of my philosophy, introduce myself to you. If there are any questions, always, always, always feel free to come by. We have an open, you know, policy with our Friends of the City. We do ask that you do check in, of course, through the main lobby, and then, you know, I'm, I have an open door with my staff, my students, teachers, and community members. So, please rest assured, we're there to make sure that this, you know, continues to be a shining beacon for the City of Tarpon Springs. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. If not, I thank you for your time. I know, you know, time is limited here. I'll say, thank you, thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. You know, it's homecoming week at Tarpon High, so Mr. Joyer is going to head back. You know, we wish the Spongers much, much, much success this year as they head into another football season. We would like to thank the City of Tarpon Springs, and we really appreciate the relationship that the city has with Pinellas County Schools in terms of mentoring. And to give you a little more information about the mentoring program and our mentoring connection with the City of Tarpon Springs, we have Ms. Jane Marino.
Thank you. As you said, my name's Jane Marino, and I'm honored to address you today. As some of you know, or most of you probably know, that the City of Tarpon Springs supports our mentoring program at Tarpon Springs High School and throughout our schools here by allowing the employees to get involved. And Mayor Archie, I want to thank you publicly for that, spearheading that campaign. We've really acquired quite a number of mentors, and thank you to our City Manager, Mr. LaCorus. He is one of our mentors at the school, at the high school. So, if you want more details for him after the meeting, you can certainly talk to him. We did have some, we sent some attachments for you all to, to see kind of what we do in a nutshell. I used one of the flyers that I put out in that "It only takes 30 minutes twice a month to change a life" and really make a difference in a child's life, and I've seen it firsthand, okay? I get a little emotional, sorry about that. And, and the way it's done is to share a lunch hour, and our lunch hour is only 30 minutes at the high school or at any of our Tarpon schools, or actually any Pinellas County schools. So, if someone works outside of Tarpon Springs, they could actually get involved at a school close to where they work. We are going to be having a mentor recruitment fair because becoming a mentor is an important job. We do need to have our mentors take a workshop, and at our recruitment fair, they've made it into an express model, and our express model is that instead of a two-hour workshop that's only had, you only have to take once, at the recruitment fair, if you visit, you will only need one hour to take the mentor workshops. So, that in and of itself is a time saver, so we're offering that at the recruitment fair along with also the ability for our volunteers to become a Level 2 volunteer, which requires fingerprinting, and that will be offered at the recruitment fair as well. Mentors do not need to be a Level 2 volunteer, they can be a Level 1. Level 1 means that you don't need to be fingerprinted, there's no cost involved to become a volunteer mentor, and, and our mentors who are Level 1 meet in public areas. For instance, our media center or out in the courtyard during lunch where there are administrators outside monitoring the area. So, they're not really alone with students, but they are enjoying a lunch side by side with the student. The student, it does, the mentor program does not replicate Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and I'd like to explain that just a little so that people know the difference. All of our mentoring is done during school hours. There is no contact with the student outside the school and no weekends or anything like that like the Big Brothers and Big Sisters mentoring program. Ours is meant to allow the student time to meet with a mentor, get to know that mentor, really share a friendship that allows them to vent frustrations. Perhaps they'd like to share the joys of something that's one, you know, really happening for them at school, but also helps keep them on a path of focus. And so, our mentors are extremely important. So, a lot of people's first impression is, "Well, how much change can I really make in 30 minutes?" Well, it's, it's accumulative. And imagine if you meet a friend once every two weeks for lunch, and you only have that brief time together. You really start to cherish those moments and look forward to them, and your friendship does grow over time. And most of our mentors, some of our mentors have come up through the, through the schools with the children, end up in the high school, and then watch them graduate. And it's a wonderful thing to have your student friendship to the point where they, they want to, you know, invite you to their graduation and share in the joys of their accomplishments. So, it happens every year. We have mentors that, whose bonds will last them forever. So, I invite all of you as well as the public to come out for the recruitment fair. It's going to be held on Monday, October 13th. It's going to be at the Feather Sound Country Club from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., 2201 Feather Sound Drive in Clearwater. And the workshops will be running every hour, beginning at 12:00 p.m. So, anyone can come out whenever they're free that day and sign up. Now, I know that's a long distance from Tarpon Springs, but I will be there for part of the recruitment fair, but there will always be someone on hand to help. I'm also going to be putting together a series of profiles for students who are waiting for mentors so that anyone who visits the recruitment fair that day, they can, they can take a look at our students that are waiting for a mentor and maybe hook up with somebody that has the same interests. So, we're hoping to have that together for that day. In the interest of keeping Tarpon Springs in the loop because it is so far away for us, right now, myself and the other liaisons from the Tarpon Springs schools, we are trying to coordinate an event that will be held here in Tarpon Springs. And I don't have that confirmed with a confirmed date, but believe me, you'll hear from me when it is set, and I appreciate your time tonight. So, DeMorris, do you have anything else? All right, thank you very much.
And again, you can get all the information about Pinellas County Schools at www.pcsb.org. www.pcsb.org. Thank you, guys.
First, I just want to take the time to thank you, Ms. Marino, for your professionalism and the way that you hound things and keep our employees that do go out there and mentor happy in and out. You know, it's a tremendous program, and I thank the City Manager especially for his leadership from within the city in terms of leading out, you know, and I think it makes it a lot easier for department heads to, to go and volunteer and others to volunteer when the lead person with the city is doing it. We also have other mentors at a lot of the other schools, too. Tarpon L is one that, that I work with. I know that there are some over at the middle school and other schools that's within Tarpon, and it's very rewarding to be involved in young people's lives. So, and it's definitely important to have a liaison such as yourself that will help to facilitate the process. So, we definitely appreciate your efforts, and anytime we can have something in Tarpon which helps with the transportation aspect would be good as far as the training that goes along with it. But I just want to personally thank you for what you do and even for putting up with Ms. Lee. Any, Commissioner Terrapanning?
Thank you. I also want to thank you, Ms. Marino, for your presentation tonight and the backup you provided, and also for keeping Tarpon Springs all the way over North County in the loop with everything that you're doing, all good things. So, we appreciate that. And also, I wanted to congratulate you, Mr. Lee, on your new position with Pinellas County School System. I'll definitely say that we miss you and miss your coverage when you were with the Tampa Bay Times, but, but, no, that's, that's truth. That's truth. But no, in all, in all seriousness, congratulations to you in your new role.
And while I had the chance, if you could tell Mr. Joyer, I didn't know he was going to leave us. You know, we, we up here, you know, especially myself, we're Sponger proud, too. You know, we, we understand the significance of Tarpon High being the best school, not only within Tarpon, but, you know, this whole United States. You know, when you are Sponger, you understand that it is about being Sponger proud, and we know that he's going to do a tremendous job. I've had a chance to sit down and talk with him. I know he's passionate about doing a good job there. He has some pretty big shoes to fill from Mr. Herbeck, who moved up in the world, and hopefully he'll still be able to assist us here in Tarpon with his new job. But we're thankful that Mr. Joyer is principal at Tarpon High, so we want him to know that we definitely appreciate him, too, so. Any, any public comments on this item? With that, we thank you. Y'all can stay around. I know Mr. Lee wants to stay and enjoy these type of meetings. Next, we'll go to consent agenda minutes, July 29th, budget work session, August 5th. Regular session, August 7th, budget work session, August 19th, regular session, September 2nd and September 8th, regular session. Attorney fees, trash, mess, Dino, LLP invoice number 46701. Zenzal Law LLC invoice number 13682. Authorized execution via our local agreement with the Pinellas County Sheriff for Prisoner Transportation Services. Application for occupational license, Yellow Cab Express Incorporated. Application for occupational license, Care Cabbie Transportation LLC. Agents renewed, Hillsbury County contract number ITB 0097-02012 slash JSW Ready Mix Concrete Products and Florable Field. Our nine is approved, revised job description, police department, crime scene technician, and property clerk. Any item anyone would like to pull? Chair will entertain a motion.
Move approval, second.
Any public comments on any of these items?
Chris Roboski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. I was going over these, reading the consent agenda earlier. The one thing that jumped out at me was the occupational license for yellow cab. And I got to thinking about it, you know, it would be nice if we could make a recommendation at least, if not at some point, make it a requirement, that if they're going to be driving on our streets that they start to use more fuel-efficient vehicles so that they're not polluting our air with their business. And now, this is viable, it's doable, would actually help their drivers make more money. Their biggest cost is putting gas in the tank, so you'd be helping, you know, people make more money, and you would also be cleaning up our air by getting hybrid vehicles. And in these short routes, they could use fully electric vehicles, and these are widely available instead of these Crown Victorias and these large vehicles that they have, for some reason, continued to use. So, consider that. I mean, perhaps you think it's too late now, but, you know, this is going to come up again and again. So, this is some place where we can actually make a change to help clean up our air in our city and also to set the standard for other cities in the county and around the country that, you know, we actually care about this, and this is something that can be done, and it's affordable. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Roll call?
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Mr. Terrapanning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes. Yes. Next item is special consent agenda, landscape, planned benches, receptacles for sponge docks.
As Mr. Function and our City Arborist, Mr. Dobbins, come forward, I'll start off with this and let you know, kind of give you an update to start where the sponge docks project is going. Obviously, we've already approved the lights and from notice, unless it's changed, Mr. Function, it hasn't changed, has it? We should be, Duke Energy should be here in beginning of next week, and we will be starting the project of their removal, and after their removal, our rewiring and installation of ours. So, hopefully that process, the people at the docks will be able to see that start this week with lights. In line with this, the second area that we said we would bring back to you is dealing with the amenity of landscaping benches and receptacles. It was put to the people at the docks, the meetings were held down at the docks. They actually got to the final group of what they wanted, and then we researched those top two, top three picks, and chose the benches and the receptacles in there for looking for durability, what could be finished. They wanted the old, go to, stay to the old type historic wood look. That's where those benches come from. This is a bench unlike the ones down there. Because of what they're made of, you cannot varnish, cover them, or whatever, that wood Brazilian, what's that, what's the Brazilian oak? I mean, you really can't do anything with those, with these ones that are coming. They still have that wood look of a docks, look of a look, but it's ones that with a regular maintenance program that Mr. Function will do. So, the selections of the receptacles and the, and the benches are the people's choice. We went down there one last time to go over it, and that is their choice, and, and those are the ones we're going with. Our City Arborist, Greg Dobbins, brought down to the docks a very visual. It's very hard to talk about landscaping, especially when you've got an area of landscaping like the docks. He prepared a visual map that, thanks to Dimitri's Restaurant and their tables laid out, we were able, able to lay the whole plan out, and they, they in essence was going around the table like clockwise or counterclockwise so they could see both sides of the streets, where all the landscaping is, what the trees were, as you can see in your backup. We've tried to show you the different types of trees so that, so that the people could look at everywhere along there and actually see, you know, pictures of what the trees were going to be and where they were going to be, be located at. And again, I think because of that highly visual nature and the ability to do that, it was, it was a consensus to go with the project, and what you see before you was, was acceptable. And in fact, the people were excited to, to look forward to it. I don't know if you want to have Arborist, Mr. Dobbins, talk a little bit about the trees or if you have any que, if you want to just ask questions up and down. Some of the highlights are, some of the accentuation in the middle of the docks, we're talking about the big, what type of palms?
Introduce yourself. Yeah. My name is Greg Dobbins. I'm your City Arborist. I've been involved in the green industry for 40 years, and I'm fortunate enough to be working with the City of Tarpon Springs, and I can only urge you to plant more trees. I'm an arborist. The main thrust of the, the plan is providing seating planters around the statue at the docks and in front of the sponge exchange with the huge phoenix palms that provide shade. It's a mix of trees and hardwood canopy and palms that are going to be utilized to give us a mix of trees down the docks. People stop where there's shade. When we were walking with everyone presenting our plan and our ideas, everyone would stop, but the only place to stop was in the shade. If we want to make this more of a year-round situation for our, our citizens as well as the tourists, if we could provide shade in a comfort area for our folks, it's the best thing you can do ever for those docks. You know, if you have any questions, I'm always available. I'm usually outrunning a chainsaw or a weed eater or something, but you can find me if you need me, and I have an email address, or you can find me through Tom's office. Any questions, please bring them to me. Any suggestions, I'd like that as well.
And again, as you mentioned, besides the actual visual, there were several walks, just walk from one end of the docks to the other end of the docks where people could give ideas. This is an area we want shade. This is the area we need to beautify. If you go down there now, we almost had a test there, if you look in front of the marina on our property in front of Arena Marina, go down and look at it, you might see and say, "Whoa, that looks nice." Ask Tom for some before and after pictures because, you know, when I went down there, I said, "Wow, we didn't have this looking this way," and then you see the old pictures, and it's, it's a big difference what we've done in there. So, if you envision, and it was also a visual for the people at dock to see, you know, what landscaping will do to the beautification, they can look, you see this here, we're going to bring that up and down the docks as part of our projects with the lights and the benches. And just a little bit more about where we're going is we're working our way through this plan and, and getting this. Obviously, if you approve this tonight, we'll be ordering, and as the lights are going, and even before, we'll be up and down bringing the landscaping in and, and doing the landscaping. And if we're on schedule and if Duke Energy does start next week, you know, I don't think there'll be any holdups of getting it done before the main part of the season. We are going to have to delay the work that we need to do for the curbs, the sidewalks and stuff. We're going to delay that to after the season because there's just no way, if we get the amenities in, that we can come in and do concrete roadwork and that and not, and not meet the deadline. So, what we've told them, that we will continue with the next phase, which is a lot of the curb, landscaping, crosswalks, adding some color back to them and those things. We will become, that will be the next thing. We will be coming back to you, but we've got time again because we don't want to do that stuff. We want the disruption to start right in May when the season's over, the slow time of summer. That's when we go in, and plus, any other, we'll, we'll have an opportunity. We've told the docks at that time, you know, with where the money goes and stuff, we will, we will look and see where that curb and road work. And I think one of the best things when they were walking for the landscaping, they saw it, they could really, not that they didn't know some of them, but, you know, the need for, for those areas and even areas of the street where we need to go in and do some improvements to the street. Everybody was able to see that, yeah, we need to put some money into, into that also. So, that will, that will be the next thing that we bring to you. Again, you know, probably sometime beginning of the year or something because we'll be gearing up to do that work, the concrete, the curbs, crosswalk type amenities. We've got one area, the sidewalk, that we're going to create a kind of combination of a ramp and sidewalk. Several things that we're going to do down there, but that will come back to you and be done after season along with, again, any other ideas as we go through to do. Again, with the meetings and the walks, I think we have, you know, we have had no naysayers. I think everybody's on board, and I think, as you can see by tonight, everybody is happy with the plans because, so, we're ready to move forward. And again, you'll also see, one thing I always remiss on that I'll get to when we talk about updated budget. one thing I was remiss on, that I'll get to when we talk about updated budget, I added a few thousand dollars to the budget for lights, because obviously, I'm going to have those poles there, and the light capabilities, I promised Christmas lights, and I didn't account in the budget for the Christmas lights up and down there on those new poles with electricity, so you'll see, I added some in the next item. But those poles will be ready for banners, we'll be starting looking at, you know, what type of banners for occasion, if there's an Tiffany banner, different banners, Greek Independence, we will be starting on that right away. So those are the things, if you envision all those things going down there, some of the trees you see there in the landscaping, you can see, we're hoping to have a beautiful project out of the docks and go forward on it. They're here to answer any questions, or any further input from the audience or commissioners on this project.
Any questions? Lieutenant Banther?
I just want to make sure, we do have the temporary lighting setup for the merchants during the downtime?
Yes, we do, actually, the lighting will start coming down around 11 o'clock on Monday night, we're working along with Duke Energy, my own crews, and there will be temporary lighting along the, along the walkway, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Tarpani?
Thank you. As I look at the agenda item in reference to the sponge docks project, and then I look at the audience, I'd say, Mr., of course, you did one of two things, you either didn't notify them, or everybody's happy. So, I know that you notified them, so I'd say that you did a pretty good job in coming up with the new project, judging by the audience. But for the record, could you just give the commission a little bit of an idea in a little bit more detail in terms of how you notified the merchants, the property owners, and what kind of meetings? I know you said you did some walking, and you held a meeting at Dimitri's, but just for the record, if you could elaborate on that.
Again, one of the things we learned from the last time, and what we made sure we accomplished as we went into the revisiting of it, was to get everybody's contact by emails, that we could have a blank email to contact, and along with that, you had to get, and that was including the people that were down there, the property owners, and compile this, so for anything, emergencies, whatever, we would have a list of property owners, and stores, and people to be involved in. But with the docks, and again, the cultural nature of the docks and stuff, there's a lot of people that did this, so, Dr. Monahan and his folks also had a list of the people that you had to contact in another way, whether it was hand giving them flyers, hand handing to them. So it was not only the contact by that way, but we knew there were people that you just had to go deliver that information to, and we made sure that was set, so that everybody would be notified, and anytime a new face was at anything, get it down, so you can be notified for everything, so that way, we could blanket everybody involved in the whole, everybody who spoke, everybody who signed the petition, that they would be contacted and could do input. We also, those who couldn't make the last meeting of it, we kept it down for the first week, we kept it down at the Harbor Masters office, for anybody to go down to the Harbor Masters office and look at. And then last week, we had it all week in City Hall, for them to come look at the plans out front in City Hall, so, and we made sure everybody knew, if you couldn't make the meeting, hey, go look at the plans, you've got a problem, come, come address us before the meeting, and so the plans were kept out and available all that time, because obviously, a nine o'clock in the morning meeting, not everybody could make, so.
Sure, thank you. As I, as I look at the plan, I was fortunate enough to kind of stumble in on a, on a meeting with you and Mr. Function and Mr. Dobbins, but I wasn't, I didn't see the alternate 19 aspect of the plan, so I would just say that I think that looks really nice, what you've done there, and I think that kind of ties into what, what we were wanting in terms of an entrance feature, and some of the feedback that we had gotten from, from years ago moving forward. So I'm pleased by that, I think that looks really nice. Turning on to Dodecanese, I see, I see what, what we've already done in front of the city marina, and what's proposed to do, and I'm looking at, I guess it would be figure B, or drawing B, and that you pass our Ferris Boulevard on the left, and then you have some foxtail palms going in, and I'm just curious, I think the, there's a big vacancy there and a big void on, on the proposed plan, and is that, that's in front of the, one of the parking lots, correct?
Yes.
And what?
That's correct, and we're trying to work on getting some easements there, it's a very narrow right-of-way, we want to have about six feet of room.
Okay.
So we're working on getting some easements, but it's a little difficult, there's multiple owners on that property, and we are negotiating with them, we've had very good relations, talks with them, they seem that, right now, to be verbally on board, but we're going to have to come up with a proposal, and they want to make sure it doesn't affect their parking, and we're trying to work those details out now.
Okay, so that's the reason for that void, then?
Yes. Thanks for asking, because that was an important aspect, we didn't, obviously, when you get into something that's not our property, and you got to get into legal agreements, you know, we don't want to stall at getting this project going in there, but in phase two or whenever, because that's not a big impact on traffic or anything, we identified and showed the group all the areas that are private property, that we have, have some type of agreement with the private property owners to land, we've talked about this all through the process. So, aside from this, where you see the empty areas, those are all there, we've already had an ambassador from the family to help us, like, on the Baller's parking lots, where there are seven owners, and obviously, trying to deal with, but we've had one step forward to say they will try to coordinate the efforts of along there, and again, some of the other property, I think that alternate 19 you talked about was a result of a successful one already with the property owner of Riverside Venue. He was at the forefront of coming out and saying, you know, hey, can you do something here? So he was easy to get on board, and that's how we got going right away, but if those other ones come to great, but we just didn't, because of the timeframe, didn't want to hold these plans.
Well, I think that's, I think that's smart, and I don't think that's a big deal to, once we do have the agreement, to then come back in and
No.
And plant that, plant those trees, or whatever the plan calls for there.
Yeah.
Moving further west, so now we're, we're going past Athens, we're in front of the sponge exchange, I don't see where, I know we're proposing the trash receptacles and also the benches, that's not shown on this plan, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so do we have an idea of where we're visualizing those benches?
Yeah, right now, we have trash cans and benches out there now, but of course, that's all, can change with adjustments on some foot traffic, which could change quite a bit.
Sure.
The lights are actually, when the new lights go in, we're actually moving them back off the curb line, more towards the back of the curbs, and more, more room for walkway, the whole, the whole open flow-up traffic flow, and that may dictate some changes in some locations, but that's easy, that's easy to work with from day to day, we can make those decisions right there on site.
And the benches and receptacles that are shown in the backup are consistent with what's already down there, so we're not having to?
Yes, they are consistent, yes.
Right, so then you move a little bit further west, and you come to the roundabout, and another, another aspect that I didn't see in the first plan, a shade sale where the benches are there in the roundabout, huh?
Yes.
Nice.
Yes.
I like that. Good job.
That was Greg's idea.
I like it, Greg. So my only other comments would be, I know from talking with you before, we don't have irrigation, it was a little, it would be problematic and extremely costly to put irrigation, so I know that we're going to have to have the water truck.
Yes.
And I think some of the, some of the plantings, and Greg, you could speak more to this, will be self-sufficient, like the palm trees, once they get, once they get established. But I'd just say, in terms of the water truck, if we could try and come up with a strategic plan on when we're going to actually water, I know sometimes people complain to me about the water truck going down alternate 19 at, you know, 8:30, 9 o'clock in the morning, which can be extremely frustrating. So if we can just take that into consideration, and not have the water truck in peak hours of, you know, busy time, busy season on the sponge docks, I think that'll, that'll keep all of our phones from blowing up.
The palette of plant materials is very xeromorphic, once it's established, there'll be limited need for hand watering for the first three, four months, yes there will.
Sure.
But the docks, not being alternate 19, you know, there's a delivery time up until 10 a.m., and certainly, all our activities would be done by that time.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I just thought I'd mention it.
Because we also have West Orange Street, now that we're going to be hand watering as well.
It looks great.
And hopefully, we would do that after the morning traffic kind of thing.
Sure. The only other thing I'd say is just that I'm proud of the plan, I think we took the right direction, and I appreciate all your efforts and in-house efforts that were done to get our rulers out and use some common sense to come up with this plan, so it looks good, thank you.
I just want to say, I appreciate your efforts, Mark, because I did get the notices, being a business owner down there, I couldn't make the meetings, but I did go to the marina and look at the, look over the plans with Mick, and I love what you all did in front of the marina there, it looks, it looks very clean and nice. I also like the, the trees coming down alternate 19 as an entryway to, to the docks, and shade is essential, you all know, when you did all that walking, that it's pretty hot out there, so I appreciate all the, all the tree planting that's going to be going on. I noticed that on Monday night, the street will be closed, is that when the poles are coming out, or what will you be doing on Monday night?
Yes, parts of the street will be closed, exactly, we don't have the exact location where Duke Energy wants to start the process, what happens is, there's a number of areas where those lights are fed from, so depending on what block they want to start the project on, will depend on what area will shut down, it'll be intermediate, it may close down from 11, it could be open as early as 3 or 4 o'clock in the morning, we're not exactly sure until we actually get in the project, but I don't see it lasting much more than a week or two at the most, at the most.
And I also appreciate sale shade, and that's something we've talked about for over a year now, because there's nice seating and plants around the circle, but no one sits there in the hot sun, so that's a great addition. And will that be part of this first phase?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for your efforts, you know, I know y'all did a good job, like Commissioner Tarpani said, we could just look at the audience and tell that, you know, you did your work, at least for now.
Now.
You know, keep our fingers crossed as we move forward, but thank you for your efforts and for the city manager's efforts. Any public comments on this item?
Mr. Mann?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I forgot something in my notes.
Go ahead.
Mark, you and I talked earlier in the day about our ownership over the Hoffman renderings, and being that we do have ownership over those, and some of the plans I think were found acceptable and in relation to the entrance feature, I for one liked, liked that aspect of, and one of the components of his design plan, and that was one of the major things that everybody talked about, was trying to come up with a little bit more of an entrance feature at Dodecanese and alternate 19, and like I said, I think the landscape on alternate 19 really helps with that. And if I recall, the budgetary, that entrance, or that entrance feature was somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 or 20,000 dollars. So for the record, I would be very much in favor of maybe bringing that back and seeing if we could form a consensus on whether or not we'd like to move forward with that design that he had.
Well, I think that's a good deal, would it help you if we had that entrance feature, if we made a decision on that, we're going to go with it? Before you did the landscaping, would the landscaping, because, I mean, theoretically, I like that feature too, I know there were some who didn't, but whether it's just everything that was going on, and just that one, I think an entrance feature, as you see a lot of places, is very vital, so I'd have no problem putting out like we did to everybody, the thing, we want to visit this, and get some ideas, if it's controversial, maybe we wait, if it's not, it can be, it can be incorporated, because that's something that also does not take from, you know, cause disruption, and we could do that along the first line of this project, if you want me to look at it, gauge the plans we already have for it, and, you know, we've got the money available in the project, and if it would help in the landscaping that you did up there to approach this now, and I have no problem approaching that again, because that was one of the features I liked also on there.
Sure, I mean, and, you know, I don't know if you would be looking for a consensus from the board on whether or not to go back to the people that you've already spoke with in the docks and try and get a consensus there, I certainly think that if there was a consensus from the board, that that would be the appropriate step as to then, I mean, it's unfortunate that you have to continue to go back, but I think that's, what we've seen is the best way to do it. So I would be in favor of that, and I'd like to hear, you know, if the board thinks that that's something that they would like to do as well.
I agree, I like that entryway as well, I think it's, we need, we need something there, and if we can put it in the plans in advance, that would be great. I like the second thing that Mr. Hoffman had on his plans, which were the arms coming down for street closures, rather than having the police department go put barricades for each street closure, I thought that was a great idea, and that would be something I would like to also ask if, you know, we could maybe think about, you know, the arms that's, that are up, you know, I think they had a sail or something on the top, that come down for street closures at Athens and Hope Streets, which I think would save time for the police department, and be much more attractive than the barricades every time we have a street closure.
Well, as I move down the line, the important part to me is the part where you engage in the people there. I mean, I know that one with the arm, you know, there were some that liked it, some didn't, some didn't like closing the street, I mean, they don't like closing the whole street anyway, so we're down on that end, just basically close the whole street, so for me, it's one of trying to make sure that, you know, whatever we are talking about doing, we're going through the same process as far as approval is concerned, and I have no problem in supporting it if we can get the merchants and the property owners and the rest to buy in, so. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I completely agree with the mayor's comments, I think it really is all about process at this point. I'm in agreement with Commissioner Terrapini that some kind of an entry feature would be nice, and I did like some of the renderings from Mr. Hoffman, but I think it's important that we go through the process of getting the stakeholders involved. I think we've learned, I guess the hard way, that we need to make sure we go through, go through that process. So yeah, I'm on board with it, but I want to make sure we go through the process before we move forward.
I, though I, though I agree with the, with the, the rest of the board, I think it's important to make sure, as a PR thing, as you've been, been, been doing well, Mark, obviously, tonight, you know, make sure they understand that's just the only piece that we're talking about, when you say bring it back from Hoffman, people understand that's what we're talking about, and let's, let's use those plans as the baseline, but not be afraid to, you know, tweak it here and there, if there's some aesthetics that might, everybody might be able to, 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 to agree upon, but I've always said the docks needed some kind of an entryway, because, you know, we've all been asked a million times, where, where's the sponge docks, and of course, we know it, obviously, but there's not really, if you've not been here, it's not really obvious per se. So I think that's very much needed, and if we have the plans, that makes sense to use them, but don't be afraid to tweak them as needed, and, but overall, it's, it's the communication with the, with the, with the, with the, with the various people down there, and all the owners.
All right, any public comments? You guys have done a great job, no public comments, nothing. Mark this down. Chair, Lieutenant Motion?
Move approval. Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archer?
Yes. Next item is orders of resolution, resolution 2014-28, application 1439 Kaiser Conditional Use Approval for two C O P in the 8th B zoning district, 900 Backwater Drive.
Resolution 2014-28, a resolution of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application 14-39 for the on-premise consumption of beer and wine for property located at 900 Backwater Drive, providing for findings and providing for an effective dates, resolution 2014-28, this item is quasi-judicial. Where the commission acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity, at such a hearing, it is not the commission's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In such a hearing, the commission is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing, and apply those findings to previously established criteria, in order to make a legal decision regarding the application. The commission may only consider evidence that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant. If that evidence demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria, then the commission is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if that evidence demonstrates the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code, then the commission is required by law to find against the applicant. There is an established procedure which will be followed. All witnesses must give their testimony under oath. All persons testifying must give their name and address for the record. All testimony and questioning must address matters that are relevant and material to the issues under consideration. The city staff will present its testimony and evidence first, the applicant will then have an opportunity to cross-examine city staff. The applicant will then present its testimony, witnesses, the city staff will have an opportunity to cross-examine the applicant's witnesses. Members of the public opposing the application will be given an opportunity to present testimony. After all members of the public speaking in opposition to the application have concluded, members of the public in support of the application will have the opportunity to present testimony. Each member of the public is limited to four minutes of testimony. The applicant will then have an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary, afterwards, city staff will be given the opportunity to make a closing argument or summary. Following this, the commission will consider the matter. Commissioners may ask questions of witnesses at this point in the proceedings, a motion will be made, and a vote will be taken. Before beginning, I'd ask for the commission to disclose any ex parte communications on this application. Seeing none, I'd ask all witnesses who intend to testify this evening to please stand and be sworn. It's been a long time since we've seen each other, can I ask you to raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. We'll start with the staff presentation.
Thank you. This is an application requesting a conditional use for a series two COP, which is on-premise consumption of beer and wine alcohol license in the highway business, which is HB zoning district. It's located at 900 Backwater Drive, which is located right, it's on US 19, right behind the Ferguson Lighting Building. The property is, the location, it's a 36C capacity barbecue restaurant called KCQ Barbecue. Their hours are Fridays and Saturdays from 11:00 to 7:00. They are looking to expand their beverage refreshments to include beer and wine for on-premise consumption. This complies with all the requirements of the land development code. The, there were no issues that were anticipated on any of the standards for review criteria. This was heard by the planning and zoning board at their meeting last night, and they approved it with a five and O recommendation. There was one question from one of the members regarding whether our code has a minimum requirement for seating, and there isn't any. So staff recommends approval of the two COP license for this location.
Any questions for staff? Cross-examination of staff by the applicant?
Do you want to ask me any questions?
Okay. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation?
My name's Mike Kaiser. We're at 793 Chesapeake Drive, and the restaurant's there at 900 Backwater Drive. I've a little bit of background. I've done competition barbecue when I lived in Kansas City and won many awards there. Whereas down here, I've cooked at the boys' club at the high school and did a lot of volunteer functions, and we decided to open up this little restaurant. Well, like I say, it's just Friday and Saturday, and a lot of people wondering if we, you know, have any beer that goes with the barbecue, so we're just after the application for the beer and wine. Other than that, come eat.
Questions from the commission?
I just had a comment. I want to thank the Kaisers for their patience. I know that you applied and the TRC reviewed this application on June 17th, and the inspection was completed on 7/18, and you did, you know, question what was going on with your application, and I referred you on to Ms. Lemmons, who is doing a great job fulfilling her position as well as helping out in planning and zoning with some staffing, you know, issues. But I wish you lots of luck with KC Barbecue, and thanks for your patience and understanding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Members of the public in support? Closing statement from either of you, applicant or city staff?
Let's see. Mr. Mayor?
There are no questions in Chair of the Attorney motion?
Go for approval.
Second.
With that, roll call?
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Again, as Commissioner Seaver said, we apologize for the wait, but hope the things that go well for you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have resolution 2014-22, reorganization finance department.
Resolution 2014-22, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpin Springs, Florida authorizing changes in the finance department, including a reclassification of certain positions in the finance division and utility division, and a reorganization of, and reclassification of the meter reader division, revising position descriptions and compensation, and providing for an effective date hereof. That's resolution 2014-22 by title only.
First of all, as I said during the budget time, that we're gonna be coming forward with some of these. I've got the expertise of Bob Cochin, who has helped me, and we're going to be going throughout the city, looking each division, the departments, and looking at things. This one is kind of an old one from last year that we knew was coming, and we really wanted to get this one out of the way first, especially when we're dealing in the meter reader division, which our meter readers do far more than other meter readers, as far as they don't just read the meters, they'll install backflows, they actually install some meters. And we had an open position, and we've had problems filling it. Obviously, to get to the financial area, to fill the position and get somebody in that job, we've got incumbents that's been working there a long time, and this is really a division that hadn't been looked at probably in ten, fifteen, maybe even 20 years, and the duties have changed vastly. And I think if you see all of these ones, the two positions in finance, which go for an account specialist and another specialist, if you just look at the job descriptions and see how those jobs have changed. Again, this has been on the radar, probably could have been done last budget year, but definitely we wanted to get this, especially with incorporating with the raises, we wanted to get these two divisions, because these are ones we've looked at and we know with the job duties, the two finance areas, and then in your utility building, especially the meter readers. When you look on the financial pages, first of all, there's only one of all these positions that's general fund, so the only one of the finance positions, there's only a $2,000 difference. That's all you see from general fund. The rest of them are minor. In fact, with the reorganization of the meter reader and how we've changed some positions around, there's actually gonna be a slight savings in there. And again, when you look at the, when you look at that, it was simply a long process of where do we put the two incumbents, the five-year incumbent and nine-year incumbent? So basically, we got to a new starting where we needed to be, and basically, the five-year person, we slowed them three percent of both starting, and then we went to the next one and did five percent of both starting to set the realm for this position. Again, from the backup, you can see they do far more than just reading the meters. So it's mostly all except one permission from the enterprise fund. They're very limited monetary, but the people we've had who are all incumbents and have been in the job and doing these duties that you see in red, which are new parts of the job description for a long time, it's kind of getting them into position in the grade where they need to be. Ms. Walker's here to answer any questions. Again, Bob Cochin has been involved in reviewing and going over everything to kind of go in line with what we're gonna be doing throughout the departments within the next couple of months, looking at the organizations, where we can fine-tune things, maybe define who the positions are under as we go through and do that. He's looked through this one, so we keep consistent throughout the departments, and both of them are available to answer any questions that you have on this.
Any questions? Let's start, Ben.
Mr. Lacourse, was this additionally a recommendation that was given to us by the external auditor?
I don't think so.
No? I thought they referenced it in some form. I was just out of curiosity.
Chair of the Attorney motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any public comments on this item? Roll call.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item number 13 is ordinance 2014-13, repealing section 27 of the city charter. This is first reading.
Ordinance 2014-13, ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpin Springs, Florida, repealing section 27, tax increases of the Tarpin Springs City Charter, stating the purpose and intent setting forth legislative findings, providing for severability and providing for an effective dates. First reading of ordinance 2014-13 by title only. Second reading will be held on October 7, 2014, and will be published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on September 19, 2014. Y'all have received my report on this dated September 9, 2014. The Charter Review Committee brought to Regina Kardashian, my office, she's staff in the Charter Review Committee in my office, that article, or section 27 in the city charter is contrary to both the Florida Constitution and Florida statutes, the statute emanated from a Supreme Court, a Florida Supreme Court case. Functionally, the provision of the city charter limits the ad valorem millage increase, the maximum ad valorem millage increase that can be imposed without a referendum. That is simply not permitted by the Constitution, and so that provision of the charter needs to be removed. Even if it stays in the charter, it can't be enforced anyway, so this is something of a housekeeping matter, but in the interest of keeping the city charter updated with the current state of the law, I recommend approval of the ordinance as drafted.
Thank you. First, I'd just say that my first concern was that it had went through charter revision, and I was happy to hear that they had looked at it, and also that, you know, this is first reading, so others that's out there would know that this is a matter not of the commission deciding that they don't want to do something that the people said they wanted to do, but that basically this is illegal. I mean, in talking to all the city managers, it's one that, you know, we could, it would be useless to go back out and ask the people whether they would approve this change or not, since the change would be one that we couldn't enact anyway because it's illegal. So therefore, there will be another opportunity for a second reading for anybody else to get clarification that this is something that basically goes counter to state law, which means basically that's invalid, and we should just remove it from our charter. I'm not sure if anyone has any questions. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. One question I have is whether or not this is gone before the budget advisory board?
No.
And then out of curiosity, when, I guess this is related to Florida statute 195.207, when was that passed? Like, when did it become true that any provision attempting to do so is nullified and repealed as stated in the backup?
Well, yeah, that's an interesting question. I believe that the statute was passed in 1973, and the charter provision, I believe, was either placed in the charter or somehow appeared in the charter, as best as I can tell, in 1995. My opinion, given those dates, is that this has been, it was improper when passed, and I don't believe it's ever been actually put out to referendum for this matter. I don't think it's ever been implemented. Nevertheless...
So in 1973, the state passed a law that prohibited what our city did in 1995? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Thank you.
And what I would suggest that we do in the meantime is to try to, if you would like, have this budget advisory committee to look at it.
What is the date of the second reading? This is the first reading. What is the date of the second reading?
October 7.
When is the next meeting?
Their next meeting is October 9.
I guess then my next question is, what triggered us looking at it now here in 2014? I guess we should have looked at this in 1995, but I'm trying to figure out why we're looking at it now.
And I think it was Mr. Elliott on the Charter Review Committee. I wasn't at the meetings, but I think it was Mr. Elliott who actually brought it to Regina's attention, when she and I discussed it, you know, at the end of their convening the Charter Review Commission, makes a series of recommendations to this commission. It may have some, it may have none. Nevertheless, this is not an issue that is necessarily subject to that recommendation. It's just simply, it sort of operates independently. Because when I looked at it, I said, well, well, gosh, we can't do this anyways, even if it's, regardless of who brought it up, the Charter Review Commission was simply the vehicle by which it came to my attention. And so rather than having outdated and obsolete law in your charter, I figured it was best to simply eliminate it pursuant to the statute as soon as we could.
Thank you.
This is a matter of keeping...
Yes, it was Mr. Elliott who brought it to the attention and caused the research and found out that, the history of why it got in and why no one called that the question then, that's 20 years ago.
Right. It's 20 years that newest tab that he served on the charter revision to do it that.
It's just, as I said, it's never been, I don't think it's ever been used within the city. I don't think it's ever been, and Michelle's noting that I'm correct, it's never been actually, we've never actually violated the law simply because we've never done it, but...
No, I don't believe we've ever violated law, but I think it's been referenced multiple times over the years that, oh, we can't do such and such because it's in our charter, and in hindsight, it shouldn't have been in our charter all along. So it's interesting that it's been in there since 1995, and in fact, it was there, I guess you would say illegally.
Or improvidently, either way.
And again, I think a lot of it came up when we were facing the financial crisis, and it was brought up, you know, we have no ability to go beyond if we run into serious financial, obviously, and most times, you wouldn't see this, imagine you're wanting to go up a half million, anything, you wouldn't see present. I don't think we've had a commission send that would do that, but not charter-wise. But I think when this came up with a lot of attention was if the revenues really dropped off and stuff, that there was no mechanism for the city to try to recover by raising the millage weight because of this being in the charter. That's the only time, it was never a case where we needed to go above that half mil to do that, but, you know, if things kept dropping, we had to keep services or keep people, you know, we were of the opinion, and it kind of just made us work harder to make it happen without trying to go that way. So it's never really a case where we haven't done it because of that being there. It was just talked about. If things got worse and got real bad, we're in trouble because we don't have that mechanism.
I think, though, that there have been times, and maybe this is what you're alluding to, Mr. Lacourse, but I think there have been times that we have been advised by staff that because of the economic times, and because of the fact that we can't raise the millage rate by more than a certain amount in the future, that we need to raise it by a certain amount now, because we won't be able to raise it by more next year if we have to. So I guess I'm disappointed that we didn't know from a legal standpoint, that we weren't advised from a legal standpoint, that in actuality, if we needed to, we did have the ability to do so. So I guess I'm surprised and disappointed from a legal standpoint that this had been on the books and that we had been advised from a legal standpoint that that's what we had available, and I guess in this case, not available to us. So that, I don't have a problem with moving forward with this agenda item. I'm just really surprised that it had been on our books since 1995, and that it had been referenced multiple times during my time on this board from a legal standpoint. Thank you.
Well, and I definitely appreciate the comments, because I know that since I've been on, we've done some things in a sense because of it, trying to be proactive. But in order to do what you had asked, at least in terms of budget advisory committee, I don't know whether we have to do the second reading at that point in time, because this one here is one that I just would like to, for everybody that might want to come talk here, simply because of what you talked about. Seventy-three, ninety-five, 2014, we're making this, we thanked Mr. Elliott, but then we say, you know, I say, well, how many times has the Charter Revision Committee met since 1995, and how many times he was on there during that time, and we still didn't catch it until now? It's just one that I would want to try to make sure that the public understands that this is something that's not basically saying going against their wishes, but something that we couldn't enact anyway. Hopefully, future commissioners won't find the need to talk in terms of raising the millage. Anyway, that we continue to look at opportunities that we can to lower the millage, but who knows what the future has in store. So I'd rather continue to look at, just trying to educate people as to why we're doing this. So I don't have a problem delaying that in terms of, until they can look at it, it's not a lot that they can do.
Yeah, I don't think they can do anything.
But it's just another opportunity for them to tell other residents why we're doing this, you know. So...
Yes, sir. I don't have a real problem with, I don't, I just am having trouble, I mean, if a charter commission issue, I don't know what the budget advisory is, I mean, I'd be glad to tell them it's coming up on that, I just don't know what the discussion would be at the budget advisory committee, because it's really a charter revision committee thing, but I just don't know what the discussion would be.
Well, and my biggest thing now is just one of just trying to make sure that as much energy and effort is conveyed as to why we're doing this. You know, I'm just as surprised, I mean, when I saw it, I was, you know, I was shocked as to what it really was, because, you know, there was no indication that anything was wrong, but so...
If nothing else, I think it should be brought forth to the budget advisory board as an informational item. I mean, there's really nothing... There's really nothing they can do about it. There's no recommendation for them to make. But I think over time, they also have been presented with the statement that we cannot approve the millage rate by more than such and such. I think they've been given that same information. So at a minimum, they need to receive this memorandum.
We can put it on the, Michelle does the agendas for the meeting, we can put it on the next meeting.
And I think that's important. I don't think there's any particular action or recommendation that the Budget Advisory Board could make, but I think it is important that we keep them in the loop, so to speak.
Showed the intent of motion.
Move of approval.
Motion to approve, second.
Any public comments on this item?
Backup is pretty scant. There were some good questions. Mr. Deneau seemed to not be sure about the original date of this law. I would have liked to have seen more background as far as he referenced particular cases and on those cases, it would put dates and times. And you were concerned about PR earlier, and I think you should be concerned about PR on this. Technically, and I haven't looked back at the statute, yeah, you can maybe go in and abolish it on a 5-0 vote. But you do have a Charter Review Commission making recommendations. And if they deem it worthy to present, then they can. And if not, through the process, you also, as a board, can put recommendations forward. Now, I'm not sure when you're planning on putting the recommendations forward, either for November or for a March referendum, which that wouldn't make sense because we don't have any mayoral or commission elections this coming March. But I really, you know, John Hubbard, I don't think through those years that you're referencing that there was anybody more experienced or knowledgeable about municipal law. And then Mr. Yakavon took his place. I know I was through two Charter Review Commission meeting sessions, originally with Mr. Hubbard and then the last one with Mr. Yakavon. Very thorough, very explaining about what we can and can't do and stuff of that nature. And it blows my mind that those two gentlemen of the experience they had would not have presented this. So that's why I'm curious about the dates as to, you know, when the limits came into place and maybe the wording had changed over the years. The other concern I have is the residents put that in to let you know. And I heard some good statements from Mark. Well, it was kind of there to make sure we worked harder to keep that limit. So if in some way you, this is abolished in the future, which I'm assuming if it comes to revision and you do your job properly of educating the public, that they would vote that way. But something needs to be in the charter in some way to indicate to the board that there is some limits as to what you will raise your taxes by. Because that was the overall intent. And because of that intent, commissions through the years had to work harder to find ways to keep the services and things that we provide to the city and the residents in a very fiscal manner. And even with that limit, as you look at your budget, and I kind of mentioned last time, we've been around that seven to nine million reserves for quite a number of years. So that half point mil limit didn't really affect our ability to be fiscally responsible, but it did put a duty on the commission to make sure that they were as responsible as possible to keep any kind of raises of taxes and fees to the residents at a minimum. So I would say at this point, you should follow the process of what the charter says as far as how to make changes, either defer this or reject it at this time and send it back to the charter for them to make a recommendation. And then if they don't, y'all can at that time. Thank you.
There are no other public comments, you know. My thoughts is that basically Charter Revision Committee did look at it. And the reason they didn't make a recommendation is basically because you recommend what? That it goes back out to the people so the people can make a decision that basically they don't really have any authority to make now? I mean, and I think this is that, you know, we made a move that we might not have even done if that provision hadn't been there. Because as I recall, some of the moves that we made was the thought that we could not at some future time, when we needed to raise the millage, if we needed to raise it, we couldn't raise it. So we went with the half mil as a proactive move that we wouldn't have done. And I would hope that anybody that's sitting up here wants to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money and don't just raise the mil just because they can raise the mil. Because I think when you do that, you'll find yourself not sitting up here. If you have to raise it, you're raising it because there's a reason that you can sell to the people as to why you're doing it. I know that, I believe that nobody up here wants to raise it even a half a mil, don't want to raise it at all. Hope that the economic efforts that Ms. Lemon is doing and everybody's doing will mean that we have more monies to spend, therefore, we don't have to raise the mil. So we have another reading and, you know, what date did you say that was going to be?
September, I'm sorry, October 7.
October 7. So we have that period of time to continue to look at trying to educate people as to why this is something. And I would ask though, just as information for not only us, but others that, you know, the background information that you talked about, that maybe we can look at some, a little bit more that we could share with the public. And a little bit of the quote unquote history as to how we kind of got to this point here, you know. So.
Yes, I mean, I think, I don't know what, I know we'll have, that we'll have the next reading at our meeting, but since it seems like a legal matter that's pretty open and closed, I'm not sure besides the city manager advising the Budget Advisory Committee and then advising the other capacities, you know, what further discussion it would do. But at least, you know, it was a good guideline. Again, I don't know too many elected officials in the city that have wanted to raise it above half a mil. But nonetheless, for those that might be a little ambitious in years where you could do that, at least it was a good guideline. It might have been in no one legal error, but it was a good guideline. And, you know, my only thing that I doubt, I doubt that it's the case, because I did, when I went before the Charter Committee this summer, I recommended that we put in the charter, I'm not sure if they'll bring it up or not, that we, you know, we have the state statute of what we have to keep in reserves, that we make ours 25% where the state statute's 20. So I don't know if there's any other laws out there that would relate to us restricting ourselves in the reserves as we do with our, as we do with our, with our, with our, with our tax rate. So I would be interested in that, just to be safe. I would doubt it, but, you know, but to me, it's just pretty open and shut, but it's always a good guideline to have. But again, I don't know too many people up here or that have been up here where that's going to be a big issue, so.
There's no other question?
Pardon me, thank you. Am I correct in understanding it was through referendum in 1995 that this was placed on our charter?
Yeah, it looks like it. It was done by ordinance in 94 and it looks like it went to referendum in 94 and then was passed by resolution ratifying that vote in 95.
Ratifying a vote of the people?
Correct.
The residents of Tarpon Springs?
Yes, sir.
And that's been on the books since 1995? What are the ramifications of leaving it there? I understand that the memorandum states that it's null and void, you know, it's nullified, it would be nullified and repealed through the Florida Constitution. But it's been on our books since 1995. What are the ramifications of leaving it there? I presume none?
Well, just that you have an obsolete provision of law in your code. I mean, does that cause me a lot of heartburn? No, it does not. On the other hand, I'd prefer and I think that, you know, when you have residents moving to your city, businesses moving to your city, you know, they may look up the code and expect that they're getting current code and they may rely on certain things. Now, I don't know how much this would be relied on by anybody in that position, but as a broad principle, I would recommend keeping your codes and your charter as current as is practical.
Yeah, thank you. I guess I'm concerned, as former Commissioner Delax mentioned, it's a relatively short memorandum stating objection to something that's been on our books since 1995. I have a hard time taking something out of our charter that our residents supported by referendum, particularly when I think the spirit of the ordinance was very clear that they, that our residents don't want our commissioners to have the ability to increase the millage rate by a certain amount in a given year. And I know the mayor mentioned that, oh, I'm sure everybody on this board doesn't want to make that decision. And I agree, everybody on this board, this board right now, I don't think wants to make such a decision. But I don't think we have any idea what future boards will do, and that's important for us to consider as well. So I really have a hard time moving forward with this at this time. I would look forward to, and I think the mayor alluded to this, I would look forward to getting some additional information, maybe about the timeline of how all of this transpired and if there are cases that were involved and what exactly happened in 1973, what happened in 1995. I really do feel like I'd like to get more information. Thank you.
Sure, and I'm happy to do that. Just in terms of background with Mr. Yakavon and Hubbard, I have spoken to both of them regarding this issue and unfortunately, both of them are, I saw John Hubbard and spent much of the day with him last Tuesday on a case. And this issue came up. He has, as you would expect, given the length and of his career and the amount of municipal issues he addressed during it, I think his exact comment was, I have no idea how it got missed. Yakavon was in the midst of tilling his land and not a lot of time to speak with me. But, yeah, I mean, you know, it's one of those things that can get missed, you know, from time to time, both by the commission or the Charter Review Commission and by legal staff, simply because it's, you know, from our perspective, you know, frankly, I don't know how it happened. I've been your attorney for about a year and so I couldn't speak to what Mr. Hubbard or Mr. Yakavon did unless they had a good recollection of what happened. So I will gather as much information as I can and provide it to you.
I would think it didn't because after it was done, you know, I was down sitting in the other end when it was done. It really, besides those times, you know, I mean, there's really never an issue to come up for an attorney. I mean, it'd come up in budgets, time, very rarely, but-
And we're typically not involved in a lot of budgets, most of the time.
Yeah, it was really one that the attorneys or anything have never been involved in because it was not an issue where you were going to try to do it. It just, it was passed in 95 and then it would just kind of, it was nothing that an attorney would examine. And I think from Mr. Elliott, if I remember correctly, when he came before the charter, it's somewhere away buried in the, I mean, it's not something right out in the open. It's something that was found, he brought it in a bunch of other things, but, you know, it's not exactly in the most prominent place where anybody would know unless you went to do some research to see on it. So I just think it was, the way it was after 95 was never brought up. And if you try to look at the state rules and constitution, I mean, it's just voluminous of stuff. And I just think it would have been an issue where either of them would have had, you know, five minutes to have to look at it because an issue came up, they may have found it then. But I don't think there's ever been an issue to really come up with the attorneys that they would even looked at it.
Yeah, and please understand, I will pride you with any information that I can relative to the issue. For me, when it was brought to my attention, the issue wasn't so much how did it get this way, it was what do we do about it? And so that's the position from which I approached it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think at this point, although I think that the, you know, clearly the state statute supersedes our local charter, I think, you know, I always like for this board to try and be as unified as possible, although there are times when we agree to disagree on certain things. So I think if Vice Mayor Larson's having, would like to, it sounds like you'd like to defer to try and get some, a little bit more additional information on how we got here. I'm more than happy to rescind my motion to approve and allow some adequate time to get a little bit more comfortable as an entire board.
Well, and I'm glad that you had said that because I was going to ask if we might consider, you know, tabling, just from the perspective of trying to get a little bit more information, the background, the rest. It's one of these items where, you know, for me, I do what I have to do. I wouldn't want to leave it in place and give the impression to other commissioners. I guess I'm, I like to try to be optimistic. I like to think that people that sit up here want to do what's best for all of the residents at any point in time. If they decide they want to do something because they feel like it's best. I would hope that there's never an opportunity or the time to raise taxes, period. But if that time comes, I wouldn't want to handcuff anybody by the thought that what's in our charter is illegal and this conversation that we have goes away. You know, for 20 years, this thing has been laying here on the books for everybody to look at and for every Charter Revision Committee to discuss. Because if they did it like they have been doing it in the past, they go down every last one of the items, including this one, for numerous years. And nobody thought that it was that. So I would hope that, you know, would you rescind yours and the second that we could table this, just so that we can get a little bit more of the background and then when everybody feel comfortable to try to move ahead with this. And, you know, I could tell you, I struggle with it, but it is what it is, you know.
Yeah, thank you. I would appreciate additional information. It's been on the books since 1995. I think another month or two probably will hurt.
And plus, we passed for us raising the taxes, so it's not going to be relevant for a little while now, so, you know. The, who was the maker of the second of the motion?
I did the second. I'll rescind my second if I need to.
And we can get a motion to table this then.
Motion to defer?
Second.
Does it need to be date certain or are we okay?
Yeah, with that is that, you know, whatever background that we might, you might have, we can look at and then we'll look at with that bringing it back at, I don't know if you've got a date certain or there's a-
I don't know if we need it.
Yeah. October 7? You said we don't need to do one unless you want.
All right, that's fine. Fine.
It's actually your option if you want to do a date certain, we can do it.
And I'm sure we'll get a lot of conversation with the historians of the city as far as what happened. Roll call.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapanning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Next we go to miscellaneous item, fiscal year 2015 budget update.
Two things I wanted to talk to you about tonight for our next, for the final budget hearing, which is on the 24th of September. You've got the official as of now and of course, it can be obviously changed come the 24th, but the official final revision in your backup that shows you some things we have talked about and I'll go over a few of those things. We already had the website improvement in there. One item I've added to the budget and we've talked about it for a while in Pinellas County is helping us with them is the ability to live screen, livestream our meetings on television and web wise. They've been working with us on that. They're still looking, when we did our last purchase of some new cameras and some new equipment upstairs, we made those purchases with the county's recommendation anticipating this next stage of going to this. So right now, I want to put in there, since we're getting closer and again, they're up there doing a final evaluation of what we need and the cost, I wanted to put a $20,000 allotment into there to hopefully be working real soon about getting that available so it can be watched live. real soon about getting that available so it can be watched live. If people see something they're interested in, they can jump in their car and get here in five minutes and hit the podium, or actually see it before the next day and see it going. So I think that's been important. A lot of have mentioned, and Mr. Banther, I know we've, we've talked about it, and we talked about it when we were buying the new equipment to make sure it was compatible so that sometime in the future, we could do that. So I've added that in there. I added the jetty money that we talked about at the first budget hearing. Um, we had talked about both Commissioner Seaver and the mayor about some additional advertising money for Brand USA and, and working with the merchants on some different ideas and stuff, so I've added that component. And as I said, it was a realization as we were getting and getting Duke Energy's okay and seeing the light project going on that I hadn't lighted for, for lighting the docks with Christmas lights. So I've got that one in there. So, so the first thing is this final, where we are right now as we go into the last budget, budget hearing. Um, the second thing I wanted Karen Lemons to talk a little about, the issue came up at the last budget update about the, the money, which was from the nursing home money, that final allotment, and what we were looking at. So I wanted Karen to come up and just briefly describe. Now, this will come back to you in, in October to approve. Um, so, but I wanted to know, but, um, our concept where I talked about the money we had left, um, in the CRA money, this grant money here for dock improvements, restaurants and stuff, that's going to come back, um, where that 50s, five thou, whatever, the, the money was for it, and that the capability of this commission, if, how we want it to be, it's used, and the money runs out sometime during the budget year to come back to you and a lot from wherever, from reserve, from some savings we've got or wherever, to add 20, 30, 40 more thousand to it, um, that capability when the money comes out. So if you just go through what we're going to bring back to them in October, um, those grants that we're allotting that the rest of the nursing home money for, um, and what you had talked about before.
Okay. Yeah, what we thought we could, what we could do that would work well, um, I think for everybody is to, we talked about the, the three grants, to maintain the existing CRA facade grant that we have, um, that's a 50% reimbursement up to $10,000 for a single story, or 15 for a two-story. And then we'd like to create the new, um, restaurant recruitment grant for the CRA, and that would be a 50% reimbursement up to $7,500. And that would be to repurpose a retail or commercial building into a restaurant use, and the goal, um, of course, would be to, um, recruit more restaurants into the CRA central business district area, which will help to create that, that critical mass that we're trying to get to promote, um, more foot traffic, um, day and nighttime, and that would be prioritizing restaurants that would be open, um, lunch and dinner, and not just daytime or nighttime. And then the, the third is to create a new sponge docks improvement grant, um, and that would be a facade grant, just like the CRA facade grant for exterior renovations to commercial properties, um, within the sponge docks area. And that would work the same way. It would be a reimbursement of 50% up to $7,500 for, um, exterior improvements throughout the docks area. And what we thought we could do to, to fund those is to utilize the 54,000, that's approximately in the nursing home proceeds, and then combine that with the existing 37 that's already remaining from the CRA existing grant, which would give us a, a total of about $91,000. And if and when those funds deplete, then we could come back to you, um, with a status report and a request for, um, additional funds that could come from, you know, a variety of places within the budget. Rather than allocating a, you know, a larger amount this time, we don't know how much we're going to use or how popular the programs will be, we can always come back to you at a later time for that.
Um, for clarification, did you say that there would be one pot for the, the CRA in the sponge dock?
Well, it would be to the, the existing CRA grant that we have right now that has a 37,000, that's a separate one.
Sure.
But for the nursing home proceeds, those are proceeds from the sale of the nursing homes, so that's not, you know, CRA property tax dollars. So that would be combined into one fund.
For?
For the two, the two grant programs could utilize those.
The restaurant grant and the sponge docks grant?
Correct.
I understand. Thank you.
That grant that's now at 37,000, uh, where did it start at again?
It started out at 150,000 in, um, basically 2000, end of 2011, 2012.
That was my next question.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
As we look at moving forward, I know in October, we'll be looking at it, um, a little bit more closely, is that whatever, um, ideas that you might have as far as tweaking those grants, that it might be utilized more. I know that in the end, we start using, using them a little bit more than we did initially, you know, so hopefully some of those things that we learn, we can use for the sponge dock area too, so. Um, anything, uh, Commissioner?
Well, mine's more for, for Mark. Should I wait till after her? Can I go down?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just, well, first off, um, I'm very glad we are looking into the, uh, the, the, the live, the, the lives, li, li, live, live, uh, streaming. I think that, that will engage more, more people because not everyone has the access channel, and that's obviously not live. And, um, you know, people may, might want to watch one, one particular item, but not, but not, not want to come to City Hall, so they can do that front, front, from any platform. And that'll integrate nicely with our, our new website, which is just as much promotion and advertising as anything. Um, you put 10,000 in there, I think that's a lot. I don't think they'll need that much. I'd be surprised unless, you know, there's some things I'm, I'm, I'm unaware of, but I would suspect that that would come in at least 25% under or more, just from my knowledge in that area. But, um, I'm, I'm very glad that we're taking these, 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 uh, initiatives because it's going to help engagement and, you know, the website just, it just needs so much help, so that's good.
Anything else, you know, questions for the budget before next Wednesday?
I just want to say I appreciate also, Mark, um, additional funds for the website and, and for marketing our city, which I think is very necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other items, then we'll adjourn this meeting and go to our chief.
No comments, Mayor?
Attorney?
No comments.
City manager? Let me go down here and ask Commissioner Seaver.
I just want to remind everyone that this Friday is a homecoming for Tarpon Springs High School, and their parade will start at 4:30, so come on out and, and cheer the Spongeers.
Commissioner Terrapany?
Um, just for some clarification, we have a budget meeting on a week from tomorrow. Is that correct? Yes.
Second and final public hearing for the budget. Vice Mayor?
I've said enough.
Commissioner Banther?
No comments, Mayor.
Well, you know, we're, we're on a win streak for the Spongeers are concerned, so it's homecoming, we just need to heat up on some people, so. Uh, with that, uh, we'll adjourn at 8:12.
I was a little bit unprepared, actually. Yeah. Surprise. Close enough. It's my turn.[1765.51]